Good morning. This is the Tuesday, April 17th Work Session of the Portland City Council. Director Scott, good morning.
Good morning Mayor, good morning Council. Andrew Scott, Director of the City Budget Office. Let me pull up, and everyone has their Exhibit Number Four handouts. So this morning is a work session to talk about the spring supplemental budget. And we have two hours scheduled, but I do not think we're going to take anywhere near that long. So hopefully, we can give you a little bit of time back. I think this spring supplemental is pretty straightforward overall. What happens in the spring supplemental budget, just to remind everyone, is that bureaus have an opportunity to true up their budgets for the end of the year. So they look at their spending where they are, they look at where they're projected to be by the end of the year, and they make adjustments that may be needed to do that. Bureaus also have the opportunity to request compensation set aside. And just as a reminder, compensation set aside is one way that the city helps control overall personnel spending. At the beginning of every budget, when we adopt the budget, we actually take the increased costs from cost of living and health inflation, and we set that aside in a separate account called the compensation set aside. This is part of a bureau's budget, but we just don't give it to them directly upfront. And the reason for that is, as the bureau goes through the year, most bureaus have vacancies that just naturally occur. And that underspending through those vacancies can be used to cover some of those inflationary costs. The following year, those inflationary costs are built back into their base. But it's one way that we sort of control. However, there are a number of bureaus, as we go through the year, that are fully staffed and that do require compensation set aside. And the spring bump is the time when they can come in and make that case. And we have some bureaus who have done that today. The spring supplemental budget is also an opportunity to request carryover funding. So carryover funding is for projects that a bureau has started but has not yet completed, or that they've received funding for even if they haven't started, and they want to carry that over for the future years. And then bureaus also have an opportunity to make new requests for general fund contingency. And just as a reminder, City Financial Policy says the general fund contingency should only be used for urgent or unforeseen issues, unless council deems otherwise. So I'll do a little bit of overview, and then we will go through, and I'm not going to go through every package, but I'll hit some of the highlights in the mayor's proposed spring supplemental budget. And then, of course, we're happy to take questions. And some City Budget Office analysts are here, as well as bureau staff, if you have specific questions on these packages. Just to give council a little bit of sense of magnitude, we are starting this process in the spring bump with unrestricted contingency of just under $2 million. So again, that's what we were starting with. So what we set aside is contingency for this year. That's what's been available. Compensation set aside is about $7.2 million with some of the state shared revenues that we're receiving, and I'll walk through those in a minute as well. And then we have some other policy set asides in the budget as well, that I don't think are going to be impacted too much by this bump. So turning to Exhibit Four, which you should have in front of you, we'll just start and sort of quickly go through each of these categories. So as I mentioned, the compensation set aside, what that's for, how it's used. We did have requests from fire, police, and parks for their compensation set aside for the full amounts this year, $7.2 million. And that is included in the mayor's proposed budget. Again, these are for personnel expenses that are normally occurring throughout the year. Fire and police and parks have all been either fully staffed, or have had some other personnel expenses, overtime, protest-related costs, et cetera, that are taken into account here. We have reviewed these requests and think they are appropriate to fund. That is the entire amount of compensation set aside. $7.2 million is being fully utilized in this bump. The next category, these are mid-year reductions in new discretionary revenues. They're called mid-year reductions. This is actually just a return of underspending. So you'll see the three here, this almost $600,000 from the Bureau of Emergency Communications. Boeck is funded through general fund, roughly 80% of their budget. The other 20% comes from other jurisdictions that share those services. But because they are a separate fund, we send them the general fund, and then they send us back the underspending in the spring bump. So this is primarily, the operating return to the general fund is underspending from last year's budget, the 1617 budget, I'm sorry, yeah, the 1617 budget, that they've now trued up their books and returning that underspending to the general fund. There's also a little bit of savings from their CAD refresh project of $237,000, and then $165 savings on their innovation fund project. And so all that's coming back to the general fund, about $600,000. So that's increasing our overall contingency amount. Then, new discretionary revenues, the next line there, these are marijuana state shared revenues. So this is Portland's share of the state tax that's collected on cannabis sales throughout the state of Oregon. This is our first allotment of this tax. They've been holding on to it for a little bit of time, as they sort of get their systems up and running and figure out what the overall revenue stream's going to be. So this is a $3 million allotment. We don't expect this $3 million. This will not be an ongoing amount. We're projecting about $1.2 million a year from the state shared revenue for marijuana sales. But again, this is a lump sum payment. This money's coming back into actually compensation set aside and contingency in this spring bump. We've been expecting this as part of this year's budget.
What are the rules for what we can use that for?
This funding can be used for, pretty broadly, for public safety services generally. And so one of the things you'll see is this money's going back, this $3 million, or most of it's going back into compensation set aside. And then you'll see that the police bureau, and the police bureau has a large compensation set aside request. So you may recall, our overall state shared revenues, which I may not remember the exact number, I think it's 14 or 15 million dollars. We have to declare at the beginning of the year what those things are for, and we say that we're going to dedicate those to public safety. This is a little bit more restrictive, this marijuana funding, but it can be used for, you know, for police services. And so as long as our police bureau budget is larger than the amount we're receiving, which it is significantly, the city attorneys, you know, we consulted with them, that this is an appropriate use.
But it's not, just going to the general bucket of compensation set aside, not necessarily the police's?
Well, it is in fact, because police is requesting $3.1 million of compensation set aside. It's all part of the general fund bucket, but we can certainly, I mean, it's not just the argument, we are spending more than that out of our compensation set aside on police services.
But don't we have, the compensation set aside is set aside, right, out of our own budget? So if we didn't have this money, we'd have it set aside from something else, right?
I may not be following the question.
Well, we've got a big bucket of compensation set aside. How does it accumulate?
So we, at the beginning of the year, as part of the budget process, we look at what the projected inflation is for the next year, both in cost of living increases and health benefit increases. And then we set aside that amount based on general fund employees.
Okay. So that's why I'm saying it's already budgeted that we would be paying this. So I think where I'm going with this is when we have our work session on cannabis tax money and its allocation, this state shared revenue should be part of that conversation. Because I want it to be very clearly delineated as going to please public safety, rather than just adding to our compensation set aside, which we should be budgeting for in the first place. Right?
Can I just ask, so is this a question about like new spending versus backfill? I mean, because a lot of times, when new revenue comes in, it's used as backfill, and that frees up money that's used elsewhere. And I think that's what I'm hearing you getting.
That is part of the concern with the cannabis tax money.
Yeah, is that it's just being used to backfill compensation set aside. And as a result, it's not, like, new investments related to the things that the voters may have thought that they were getting when they voted.
Yes. So in the case of the local tax, yes, voters were specifically promised various things, although it was not stated explicitly that there would all be new programs. So as long as it's going to a program that is covered in what we wrote in the voters pamphlet for the 3% local tax, then that's okay. This state shared revenue ought to count in the public safety benefiting from cannabis tax money kind of concept, rather than it just going into a bucket which we set aside at the beginning of the year anyway. But yes, it's all about, are we backfilling, are we adding, and how are we accounting for the cannabis tax money wherever it's coming from?
For no other questions on that, we'll move on to the new requests. So, and actually before, so there is $3.6 million of new revenue coming in, which is helping us to fund a number of the things that you're going to see in this supplemental, spring supplemental budget. In terms of new requests, these really fall into two broad categories. You'll see that the mayor's proposed spring supplemental budget has $2.8 million of new requests included. About $1.9 million of this is for additional bargaining costs. And you'll see these in terms of the Portland Fire and Rescue, the PFFA bargaining arbitration expenses, $203,000. The next line, under Fire and Rescue, the $181,000 for longevity pay. Dropping two more down, just under $1.5 million for DCTU labor cost increases at the police bureau. Those are all contracts that have been approved by the council, and those are costs that these bureaus have incurred in the current year. And so those labor costs are being included here. That's the bulk of this new spending request. The other large number on here is the $825,000 to address homeless camp cleanup issues. This is going to the Bureau of Transportation, again, adjusting their IA with OMF. And I think council offices have had conversations about this as well. As this cleanup effort has intensified around the city, the original budget that these bureaus had, these interagency agreements with OMF for the cleanups was exceeded, as we cleaned up more and more campsites throughout the year. So this is providing general fund to transportation to fund that overage in terms of that overall campsite cleanup. There are then a couple of small amounts. Oh, I'm sorry, one more labor issue at the very bottom, the special appropriation, professional development, technical adjustment. This is a $77,000 technical, professional development, I believe it's for copia that we needed to true up from last year, again, part of a labor contract issue. There are then two small amounts here, $10,000 for the Portland Gay Men's Chorus to travel to China, and a $5,000 stipend for the Creative Laureate. Going through the other new requests on here that are not funded, just very quickly, within the Office of Management and Finance, there was a budget request for homeaway mediation in our view. And in terms of what the mayor's included, there should be underspending in OMF sufficient to fund that. ONI requested funding for a space study for the East Portland Neighborhood Office, and in terms of their future. And again, we feel like that's something that, if it's a high priority for ONI, they can find the $23,000, either in this year's budget or next year's budget, in order to fund. There was a request for a street tree task force, $100,000 to, and I believe it's to look at the issue of whether the city should take on some of the responsibility for the street trees.
I read your rise up on that. The council had a discussion, and that was moving forward. So I'm just perplexed as to why, it seems like CBO is making a policy decision to not fund it when council said that, yes, we should do it.
And, yeah, forgive me for maybe not understanding, did council in its action direct the funding to the Parks Bureau for this?
What happened was that it was going to be absorbed within the Office of Management and Finance, because Jamie Walsh was going to lead it. She's now no longer with the Office of Management and Finance, and they don't have anybody who's able to do it as part of their existing budget, hence the request for the outside consultant to lead it. But yes, it was a council's direction to go ahead and do it. I mean, yes, I agree that the outcome may be, gosh, this is going to cost a lot of money, and maybe we don't change the current policy. But that was something that council said we were really concerned about, because currently, it's the adjacent property owner who's responsible. And that can be a nasty shock for somebody when they realize that they're responsible for trees they didn't even know were there, never mind that they were their responsibilities.
Yeah, go ahead.
This one?
Yeah. Good morning, Council, Ryan, Council at the Budget Office. So I reviewed the work session. I think the direction that council gave was that you would come back and request funding as part of the spring bump. I don't think there's any council action taken at the work session that directed that the funding be, but that you come back and just ask for it at the time.
So this responds to that request?
Yes, that's correct. Yes. Yeah, I think the bureaus followed your direction at that work session to come forward with the request.
So then, colleagues, the question is, do you want Parks to go ahead and do that study or not?
Okay. Moving on then, why don't we put that in a park, let's go through all of these, and let's put stuff in a parking lot that we'd like to have a discussion about at the end. So let's put that on the list.
Yeah.
Let's put the ONI space study in the parking lot, please.
The next item there, the Portland Police Bureau Grants Funds Adjustment, that actually is a technical adjustment. So it should have been in the section on the bottom. It just got flagged as the wrong package. So I don't think there's anything of note there. Prosper Portland, they made two requests, Hill Block Community Engagement and a Floor Area Ratio Study for $50,000 and $30,000 respectively. The decision here is actually to move forward with both of those. But Prosper Portland also, and further down under their program carryovers, requested some carryover for healthcare cluster and traded sector. And so the mayor's decision here was, instead of carrying those, that's underspending from the current year, instead of carrying that funding over to next year, go ahead and use that funding, realign it for the Hill Block Community Engagement and Floor Area Ratio Study. So they are going to move forward, but there's not new money involved.
Yeah. And I just want to underscore this for the record, so that we are crystal clear, and there's no confusion. The Hill Block Community Engagement will be funded. It is just being funded through a different source. So I want to be very, very clear about that.
And the FAR study as well?
And the FAR study as well, both through underspending.
And the Hill Block is at $75,000?
Oh, okay. And Mayor, just to clarify, actually, I think Hill Block is going to be funded at 75,000 with that underspending.
75,000 for Hill Block, thank you.
But I think it's an additional amount beyond that.
Great, thank you.
And any other questions about new requests on this list before we move on to program carryovers?
I was concerned that we're not recommending the Creative Laureate. And my understanding is that 5,000 is only, is for two years, which seems not very much.
We're satisfied, Commissioner Fritz, it's in the mayor's proposed. So we look forward to getting council support for that when it comes back.
So it's going through the regular budget process instead of the bump?
It is funded here, under the mayor's proposed, this $5,000.
The right-hand column.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to program carryover. So as I mentioned, program carryovers, this is an opportunity for bureaus. And there's a few different things that fall into this category. So I'll try and be clear as we go through this. There is existing projects, and some of these are one-time IT projects, or other things that bureaus have begun to work on or have received funding for, and then just haven't completed. And so non-general fund bureaus can carry that over in their own funds. General fund bureaus have to come to council and ask for permission to carry those funds forward. In addition, there are a few instances here that I'll highlight where we are actually, and the mayor is including some, grabbing some underspending from the bureau in the current fiscal year in 2017, 18, in order to fund new requests in 2018, 19. So we've done this in prior years as well. This is a way to help balance next year's budget, looking at existing budgets, identifying some of that underspending, which in many cases, the bureaus here have identified. And then, and then carrying that over for next year to fund either something very similar, or in some cases, something a little bit different. But it'll help balance. What council will be approving in the bump is not, in fact, next year's budget. It would just be the carryover. And then there's an opportunity during the budget process to weigh in on those specific packages as well. So in that instance, there's a couple of different actions that need to be taken. I'm not going to go through each of these. I'm happy to answer questions about them, but I will try and just highlight a few of the things that aren't sort of the traditional program carryover or other deviations. You'll see in the Office of Equity and Human Rights, they requested $200,000, but it's only $50,000 included. After further conversations with OEHR, it was determined they may not have that full $200,000 underspending, and didn't need that carryover. And the $50,000 should be sufficient. And I believe the bureau's in agreement with that. Continuing to move down the list.
Altman was zero, is there another?
Yeah. There's a, in the Office of the City Attorney, there's a small adjustment there. They requested $22,000 carryover, only $5,000 is recommended. Just was that all that was needed in the Office of City Attorney? Is that right? Can you remind me of that?
Yeah. Effectively, this is for the barriers to employment that council passed two years ago. They had $100,000. And they've actually only managed to spend $5,000 in that time on the Bowley contract. So we thought that it would make sense for them to continue to carry over another $5,000 to maintain that if a similar amount of workload comes up over the next year.
The next items there, from the Office of the City Attorney, this is an example of what I was referring to in terms of addressing some of the 2018, 19 issues. The Office of the City Attorney does have underspending this year. We are, and the mayor's proposing to grab $228,000 for a revenue collection support position next year, and $126,000 for contract support. These are two positions that the City Attorney has requested in next year's budget. We do think that they are important positions, and this is a way to fund those without using resources that might go to other programs in next year's budget. The next two items from the Office of the City Auditor, I would just note, they're not included in CBO's review. I do think the auditor and/or her staff are here today if council has any questions about those carryovers. But a carryover for security improvements in the IT audit are included in the mayor's proposed bump. There's a small adjustment to the mayor's office spring bump programmatic carryover. And again, this is also to fund some activities and positions in the 2018, 19 budget. So it's grabbing some of the underspending in this year's budget to help fund those things in next year. And then, same thing with the Summer Works Program. And that's actually, I believe, the difference between that original $200,000 underspending and the Summer Works Program, costs are going up next year just because of the increase in the minimum wage. So the internships are getting more expensive. So this is a way to keep that program fully funded by grabbing a little bit of underspending from the current year. In PBM, they requested carryover for a coop planner, and we recommended, and the mayor included, about half of that amount. They are moving forward with a different position next year. And so I think this allows some overlap with the existing position, and then the new position that they are, they are creating. Moving two down from there, in Portland Fire and Rescue, you may remember from the budget conversation with Fire Bureau, this request for the SCBA's, which is a piece of critical life safety equipment in the Fire Bureau, and they need about $3 million total. One of the ways where we are helping to bridge that gap is by grabbing a little bit of underspending in the Fire Bureau. So they originally had a request for $100,000 carryover. In working with them and really scrubbing their numbers, we think we can get that to just above $700,000. And so this gets us part of the way there to that $3 million purchase by grabbing that underspending and carrying it over. And I think the mayor's going to be addressing some of the remainder in his proposed budget.
Andrew, when we did the budget hearing, I had asked whether this would be an eligible expense against major maintenance. Have you had a chance to look at that?
We have, Commissioner, and it is an eligible expense for the capital set aside. And the Fire Bureau did go ahead and rank that and score it. And so that's part of the current 18, 19 budget conversation as well, as a source of funding.
Thank you.
In the Portland Housing Bureau, the rental rehab program, as you may know, hasn't really gotten started yet. So there is funding there, and a package is included to carry that funding over, either for rental rehab, or it may be used for other things within the Portland Housing Bureau as well. Again, the decision here is just to carry that unused funding over. And then in the 18, 19 budget process, we'll be discussing where that funding would best be utilized within housing and homeless services. There's a small adjustment at the Portland Police Bureau carryover, just in terms of working with them through their numbers. But the bulk of the $2.8 million of their request is funded. And then there is also, another one of these examples is $105,538 of grabbing some current underspending to fund one of their requests next year for a learning management system. system analyst in the 18, 19 budget. I think I've already mentioned the Prosper Portland, these are the carryovers they requested, but instead we'll reprogram that funding to two of their new requests, and then the very last thing there, carrying over $70,000 of that for next year to fund Alberta Main Street and Traded Sector programs.
So for the positions, how can we fund, are these limited time positions?
They would be, yeah. This is, the carryover funding is one-time funded, and so they would, it would need to be for limited term positions. That's correct.
So they would come back in next year's budget, not this year's, the one we're currently in?
If council approves this carryover into 18, 19 and approves the limited term positions as part of the 18, 19 budget, they would be funded for a year. They would either go away in the 19, 20 budget or they'd come back for additional one-time or ongoing funding. And then, and then there's a number of technical adjustments, technical adjustments net out to zero, so I'm happy to answer questions if council or our community advisors have any questions about the technical adjustments, but that's the bulk of it. The last thing I will note, there are position requests in here, and in total bureaus requested just over 50, so 51 new positions, which includes converting seven limited term positions. Again, in these bumps, we don't fund general fund positions ongoing because there's no ongoing funding, but non-general fund bureaus do make position requests in the bump as they go through their business and fund it out of their own revenues.
Very good. So Commissioner Fritz has asked for a discussion around the street tree program, and Commissioner Udaley has asked for a conversation around the ONI space planning.
And just as a reminder, on the street tree task forces, was a request from the Urban Forestry Commission that, in testimony, that the council responded to in saying, yes, we should go ahead and try to figure this question out. So it's, it's not something that we can do within the existing budget. If council wants to change our minds, we would have to have that discussion in private, in public, right? Because this is just a work session. But I'm just curious, Mayor, why you chose not to include it in the proposed?
I'm certainly open to the conversation, I guess. I'd want to know how the resources would be spent and who would be responsible for the process. I'm certainly not opposed.
I don't know if all the community advisors know the context on this, but, so just to make sure that I understand what we're talking about here. For property owners who have trees on property that's adjacent to their own property that's undeveloped, they have the responsibility under current code for rehabilitation and care of those trees under some circumstances, and they may be contacted about repairs to trees and care for trees that could be very expensive and kind of find out out of the blue that they have to spend a lot of their own money for trees that aren't even on their own property. And so, is that, is that right? Okay, so the, as someone who's in that space, I'm not personally in that space, but for someone who's in that space, that provides a perverse incentive for them in the middle of the night to go down and cut trees down on adjacent property. I understand that's totally illegal and I would never encourage that, but that is their incentive. And if you have incentives like that, you create circumstances where outcomes are not good for people who like trees like me. So I would encourage looking at this issue and coming up with a result that is workable both for owners and for the city.
Yeah, Rob, that's a good point. My recollection from our conversation previously was there's another scenario where you have a homeowner immediately adjacent to a very, very large swath of trees, and the homeowner then becomes responsible for the entirety of that large swath of trees. And there were some anecdotal circumstances where people said, gosh, I didn't even know, they sort of view it as a green space and they didn't realize that they were technically on the hook for the maintenance of that area. And so that precipitated a conversation as well. So I'm certainly open to this. I guess it would be helpful for me just to have a few more talking points in terms of who would actually be responsible for this and what kind of work product we're trying to get towards.
So I'll just read from page 35 of the CBO, it says, it's, the funding would be used to cover the cost of a technical consultant to review street tree maintenance programs in other cities, facilitate the task force meetings and outline the implementation of a street tree maintenance program. CBO doesn't recommend it. Parks requested the funding following the work session in which the bureau discussed the beneficiaries, options for maintenance. During this work session, council directed Parks to convene street tree task force that would explore proposals for city-funded maintenance of street trees.
There's another angle to this, which is equity. You know, we have a deficit in East Portland in some neighborhoods of street trees. We're trying, through our partners like Friends of Trees and others, we're trying to encourage people to take on trees and rights away. The challenge is that people are then taking on the liabilities, and so if you have a tree in the right of way in front of your house and over time those roots disrupt the sidewalk, for example, that's on the homeowner. I have personal experience with that, so. So there's a question about equity in parts of the city where there are not enough trees, and we're trying to encourage people to take on that responsibility. Is it realistic to say, and you've got this unfunded potential liability that comes with the tree? So this is an area where both the Bureau of Environmental Services and the Parks Bureau have a dog in the fight, so I would support this request.
Do we need a motion or what is required? Simply a notation since it's a work session?
Yeah, since it's a work session, it's really just a discussion. And then in terms of process, council will be voting on the spring bump on May 2nd, and so you'll be filing it next week. So you can make changes, Mayor, in terms of what you want to file, and/or council can make amendments on the floor.
Very good. And Commissioner Udaley, I don't know if you have feelings one way or another on this particular item.
I do not.
Very good.
If I could just comment on what Commissioner Fish said, thank you for your support and for environmental services. Obviously, transportation also has a lot of interest in this. And I want to be very clear, this is not something I'm looking forward to with joy and anticipation. It's going to be a very difficult discussion and likely come up with an outcome which, however you look at it, is going to be expensive and controversial. So in some ways, I wish I could just be quiet and let it gone away and not done it. On the other hand, that's what councils have done for the last, a long time, and then we get situations where, such as Rob described, and as you described with the swath of green space, and end up with the wrong outcome, so just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, good. So that's a good discussion, and the Commissioner, I believe we have a meeting later on today, so we'll talk about the strategy going forward. It sounds like, Rob, you're volunteering to be the chair of the committee. Thank you, we appreciate that.
I may be perfectly.
All right, good. And then Commissioner Udaley had a question with regard to the ONI space study.
Well, I'm not going to fight hard for this, but I do want to say to CBO and to the mayor that at some point continuing to tell ONI that we can find money in our existing budget, considering the size of our budget and the size of our staff and how much work we're already doing, the city has put on us without giving us funding, is getting a little ridiculous. These are small requests for basic needs, so that's all I have to say.
All right, good. So I'll put that on, I don't know if I'm meeting with you today or not, I honestly don't.
I don't know either.
Tuesday? Thursday?
Is that what day it is?
Yes, so I'm meeting on Thursday, so I will make sure that we have ample time to discuss this, and I appreciate that perspective. Thank you.
Record time, Andrew.
Yeah, I have nothing further to add. Is that it?
Any other questions, thoughts from our budget advisors? All right, thank you for being here, we are adjourned.